Sorry, I can tell we're all on. I think the next order of business would be for Al to call the attendance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alan. Before we do that, might I suggest you do some housekeeping rules?
Okay. I'm not sure what those rules should be, but if you could.
Okay, if you'd like, then I can take care of them. Just a reminder, the meeting is being livestreamed to allow for public access, and it's being recorded in accordance with Governor Lamont's executive order. And please mute your lines when you are not speaking. Member attendance and all votes will be done by roll call. Public participation for this meeting was collected via email only as noted on the agenda and posted on the board's website. Members also received copies of all comments received.
Right. Thank you, Al. I see my directions now. I was looking at the wrong page. But.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll do the roll call.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I'll do the attendance roll call, starting with Chairperson Alan Taylor.
I'm here.
Chairperson Estela Lopez.
Here.
Aaron Benham.
Here.
Bonnie Burr.
Here.
Millen Chen.
Here.
Sophia Chin.
Here.
Eric Clements. Okay, Eric Clements. Karen DeBose Walton.
Here.
Al Wood Exley.
Here.
Donald Harris.
Here.
Okay, is Dr. Jane Gates here in for President Marco Jacobin? Dr. Gates?
Your phone, your mic is off. Jane's on, Jane's on the screen.
Martha Prue?
Here.
Oh, Will DeRasco? Riesco?
Here.
Malia Seavy?
Here.
Robert Tifosi? Robert Tifosi?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, that completes the roll call.
Eric Clements.
Good morning.
Mr. Clements, thank you. Good morning.
Okay, I guess next, in accordance with our normal process, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Al, you want to?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
And to the United States of America and to the republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God.
Under God.
For liberty and justice for all.
For justice for all.
Thank you. That was awkward enough. Public participation, as you know, was received online, and the comments are all available. It almost all related to the Relay Program, so far as everything I saw as of yesterday evening, anyway. We're not going to go into executive session. Have motions on the minutes.
So moved.
Who's that?
Erin.
Molly.
Espera seconds.
Thank you. Seavy and Lopez, thank you.
It was Aaron Benham and Lopez.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Benham and Lopez.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 It would be roll call. I'm sorry, I didn't say roll call.
Okay, I'll now take a roll call vote on the minutes. Chairman Alan Taylor.
Yes.
Chairperson Estela Lopez.
Yes.
Aaron Benham.
Yes.
Bonnie Burr.
Aye.
Eric Clements.
Yes.
Karen DeBose Walton. Karen DeBose Walton. Al Wood Exley.
Yes.
Donald Harris. Donald Harris.
Yes.
Martha Prue?
Yes.
Oh, Will DeRasco?
Yes.
Malia Seavy?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I just did not hear her. Karen DeBose Walton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alan? Alan?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is Eric. Does a Will know she's upside down, or is she only upside down for me?
I.
That's for you, I think.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Should I close the camera?
She's upside down on my screen. It's making me dizzy.
Mine on my screen, a Will.
Okay, it's just me.
Oh, boy. We're gonna be okay, right?
It's never been asked before in a board meeting. Commissioner.
Thank you. Good morning. And Mr. Clements, so many things are up for these days. I don't know. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, members of the board, those who are watching online. First and foremost, to the members of the board, I hope your health and safety are well. I hope your family is well. I want to give a special recognition to our students, Sophia and Millen, who are board members, seniors, also. You know, thank you for being here. I know how busy your schedule is and how things are literally upside down, and you're here with us. It means a lot to all of us that you're here. I want to formally welcome also Chief Academic Officer Irene Perici to the team, the State Department of Education. We're excited to have her. And we know that she's just going to continue to contribute to a wonderful team that we have at the agency. I want to acknowledge and welcome Dr. Gladys Lavis, Director of Equity and Language, also. Welcome to the team. And a smiling face, Mr. Woody Exley, who is joining our board. I believe this is your first board meeting, or first public board meeting. Woody, welcome. Nice to see you on a very strong team. I want to also thank Matt Falner and Ajit Gopala Krishnan for their technical assistance to make this happen. It was a request of the board to try to have a meeting where we can see each other, and I'm thankful that we were able to pull it off. Thank you for your work, Matt and Ajit. And I appreciate all of you who submitted public comments. Thirty-nine comments were submitted. I went through them. And while I'm going to miss our friend Tom Stringfellow's comments, I look forward to getting back to the board meetings at 450 Columbus so we can hear from Tom. Tom, I hope you're well. If you're listening, I hope you're well. I want to give you an overview of some of the activity at the agency. And I'll start by sharing with you that we are working really hard to work on a reopening plan for Connecticut schools. As you might imagine, this is a very important undertaking and one that will require tremendous collaboration, coordination, and communication with folks throughout the state of Connecticut. We participate at the agency in bi-weekly conference calls with superintendents, sometimes more than two a week, to communicate and answer questions and share updates. We have weekly educational partners call with presidents of the AFT, CEA, Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendent, Connecticut Association of Board of Education, and Connecticut Association of Schools, to make sure that we're listening to what's happening, what the needs are, but also sharing information. We participate in at least three or four calls a week with the Council of Chief State School Officers. It's a national group that's looking at reopening efforts and guidance to states from a national perspective and an international perspective. So these are some of the things that are happening on a regular basis. I want to give you an update from our Educator Support and Wellness portion of our agency also, led by Deputy Commissioner Shirley Russell Tucker. I'm very proud to say that, as an agency, we've supported the the serving of approximately four million meals in the state of Connecticut since the pandemic took place. We are also working with BSS to implement a pandemic electronic benefits transfer program. So it's a pandemic EBT program to allow for others to get meals also. So that work is underway. We are really doubling down on our efforts to try to provide social emotional support, guidance, and support to districts. You know, as much as we talk about how the academic impact this is having on our students and potential learning loss, we recognize as an agency that we need to really look at social emotional well-being of our children, of our staff, as a primary function. So we have many professional support series, connections. We're doing webinars with folks throughout the state to make sure that the social emotional well-being of our students is a priority. Special education guidance and support is also an area that we're focusing heavily on. We have a wonderful team. Brian has been doing amazing work connecting with our partners throughout the state, making sure that we're listening, but also trying to provide as much support as possible, keep within the guidelines that the governor has outlined to promote health and safety. Educator support, talent. Dr. Tucker hit the ground running when she started and hasn't looked back. A lot of work going on over there. Her and Chris Todd have worked extremely hard to make sure that we're providing flexibility where it's needed to allow districts to adjust to the needs. Moving over to the academics and innovation side, led by Deputy Commissioner Desi Nesmith. A lot of work has gone on to make sure that we're identifying the needs in districts. And we've established at the agency a group of individuals whose job it is and has become to connect with the districts that have the most challenge connecting with students and do a periodic check-in and provide more targeted support for these districts to make sure that in the areas where it's most difficult to connect with students, that we're trying everything we can to meet the needs of the learners. No less than four resource guides with updates on professional learning opportunities for families and for districts to engage with students in academic learning with free resources for districts have been shared, and they're available on our website in a very easy-to-read format. So if you haven't checked it out, please, please take a moment to look at the dozens and dozens of resources that have been set up for our districts, for our families. Interestingly, much of this work has been done in collaboration with districts. You recall, we had that campaign, Learn Together, Grow Together? Well, that's, it's never been more important as a state that we learn from one another. So a lot of our website is set up to have districts learn from other districts. And our academics and innovation team has really set it up so that our website is not only a resource, a repository of resources, but a repository of good ideas that are happening throughout the state of Connecticut. I'm really proud of that. The Learn From Home Task Force has been working really hard with the support of Superintendent Nate Canal and Paul Freeman and other superintendents to see to it that the donations from philanthropy of sixty thousand laptops and almost two hundred thousand sets of materials for students make their way into the hands of students right away. So our academics and innovation department is working with that Learn From Home Task Force. You know, lastly, I won't go into too much detail about this, but you're going to be hearing a little bit about the CARES Act and where that money is going. And I just want to reiterate the importance that this board hears, the fact that we're going through an unprecedented time, and all sectors are going to get hit with this pandemic. But we're doing everything in our power to communicate the priorities of equity and access, which you highlighted, you know, in your report, Equity and Excellence. We have to make sure that we're supporting our learners by ensuring that we're providing equity and access to learning despite the pandemic. And we're going to continue to do that as an agency. But these are just some of the examples of the things that we're doing and the work that's going to keep us moving forward into the summer. That's the end of my report. Chair, thank you.
When you're on mute.
There we go. Thank you, Commissioner. We have, yes?
Could I ask a question, Ellen Commissioner? This is Malia. Commissioner, thank you so much for your report of the great work that you all are doing at the department. I'm wondering if either now or at the next meeting, or somewhere in between, it's possible to give a bit of a flavor of, you know, what are some of the sort of top requests or challenges that our districts are reaching out to you about? Just trying to get a better sense of really what is the lay of the land from a Connecticut context.
I'd like to answer that now. Malia, thank you for the question. You know, without question, we're all having to now adjust. I don't like to say the new normal. We're having to adjust to what we're learning about this virus. And what we thought we knew last month is now being questioned this month, right? So we're learning more about risk for children. We're learning about how transmission happens. We're learning that some subgroups of folks are more at risk. So I guess what districts are needing to know is, how do I do things safely? And how do I maintain safety as the number one priority while starting to reengage in education? I was having a conversation with someone yesterday. Everything that we valued or everything that we pushed for in education, collaboration, small group instruction, you know, high concentrations of students coming together around certain things, all that has to be questioned now. We have to rethink how we're going to do that. But to be very granular, very specific on something that I think we're all thinking about nationally, but in Connecticut, one of our focuses is going to be understanding that this distance learning is not going to go away on September 1st. That in order for us to get back into a regular flow of getting students into buildings, some form of distance learning is possible. So Malia, to answer your question, connectivity, devices or computers, and quality curricular tools. So three Cs: connectivity, computers, and quality curriculum. Those are the focus areas that we really need to focus on to make sure that if we do have to go back to a fully remote system, our students have access to quality curriculum through their devices with good connectivity. Thank you, Commissioner. I've actually been wondering as well about what we're going to do come September, given all the expectation that I read about that says there's likely to be a second wave of this virus. But we'll get there later. We have no items requiring action unless anybody wants to pull something off of the consent calendar. Karen?
No. Commissioner, I'm wondering if you could just address how parent voice is being heard to contribute to the planning for the distance learning and for the reopen.
Hi, Karen. Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Parents are, the reopening committee that was put together by the governor involves having folks from different sectors come together, whether it's education, business, healthcare. What we did at the agency is establish six regional advisory teams. So this is spread out throughout Connecticut, where we have six regional advisory teams. And there was a requirement for parents to be on that, to be on that team. We've also engaged as an agency in efforts to listen to parent voice through having, I have a commissioner's roundtable meeting with representatives from different parent groups who expressed to us as an agency what their concerns are, what their needs are. And then, as I mentioned earlier, with the regional advisory team, they've engaged in a process to get comments from various stakeholders, including parents. And surveys were set up, and parents had access to filling out these surveys. And we got over twenty-four thousand people to submit over thirty thousand comments. And all that's being, you know, taken in and summarized so that it can inform the work of the reopen task force. Those are just some of the efforts. And we're going to continue to do that.
Alan, I'd like to add, if I could.
Sure.
I was going to wait until we got down to the reports, in particular NASB, because this is where this came from, on the last NASB call. But it goes along with what the commissioner is talking about now, as far as when Karen asked about the parent voice. I think the biggest piece, as I was listening to NASB call, and as I listened to students and teachers and, and more important, students, is that a big piece in which we're missing, and I hope our board can make a move on this, is forming a committee for student voice here. NASB made, threw out a question to us, and I know, I don't know if Lou Tedesco was on this call, but he was on the call for NASB, and they threw out a question to the group that we all went to school, we all know, in our experiences when we were in school. But the only one that truly knows what they're going through and should be part of this are the students that have experienced it. And some states have formed using their state board members, and boy, do we have the two best ones I've ever seen in five-plus years. That I hope we can form something like this. And a lot of the states are using not only present local district student board members, but more importantly, the ones that are coming on in the fall. Because a lot of those choices are already in the process of being selected or made already for the ones who are now junior students. But I think this is a voice that we, as a board, really need to engage, and engage pretty quickly, because I think they're going to be the ones that can tell us the most what is needed, what worked, what we should look at differently, because they really are the ones that are experiencing it.
I fully agree with you. I just keep trying to think about this from that perspective and trying to imagine if this had all happened forty or fifty years ago, I guess, when I was in school. And of course, it's much different because there would have been no way at all to connect at that time. Computers and networks didn't exist. But even with that now, it's got to just be totally disorienting.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, just a real simple example that, and I don't know if it's true, but, you know, I don't know if you saw on the news in New Britain, where, you know, they had a major connectivity problem in New Britain, and that car dealership that stepped up to provide hotspots in neighborhoods. I heard that came from a suggestion from a student, that some students go to their cars to connect because some newer cars have the hotspots. These are things that, you know, the best educators around the state aren't going to think of because we don't have to personally go into our cars to get a hotspot. But no one knows more about distant learning than our kids presently. And so I really hope that we embrace it in the board and inform that kind of committee and get moving on that soon.
Yeah, I think that definitely with students like I, like personally, my school, like, we have a lot of the resources and connectivity like is not an issue. But I think taking students from lower resource districts who don't have the connectivity and hearing their perspectives is definitely important because on top of that, students, I think, or a lot of us are teaching our teachers how to do certain things online. And I think that a lot of us know a lot more about distance learning. So I think a lot of kids have much better ideas of how best we can tackle this. So I think it's a great idea.
And to add on, I think it's not just about having the students talk to the board members and all that, but also the board members talking to the students. I was talking to Millen the other day, and we were both thinking about how before we joined the board, we didn't really know. I mean, obviously, we knew that there was a state board of education, but we didn't really hear anything from it. It was just like this, this separate body that just told our school districts to do things, you know? And I think especially in this time, it's important to hear stuff from the people making the big decisions. And as a student, just sitting at home, just plugging away, doing homework every day, it's hard for us to understand where things are coming from if we're not hearing that information as well. If that makes sense.
It does indeed make sense. Stella, did you have?
No, I, what I wanted to remind you, Alan, that before we go to the consent agenda, we had invited Kathy to talk about finance matters. And also that, you know, you have a report. I don't know if there's anything you want to report. And then after the financial matters, we'll go to the consent agenda. So thank you.
Okay, Stella, just so you know, my crib sheet says there are no financial matters today, so I should.
No, I know, I know. But we agreed yesterday because Kathy mentioned that she can talk about the CARES Act and the funding that the state got. So I thought that that would be important. Okay?
Okay, I don't see Kathy online with us. Oh, there she is. Okay.
Alan, before we move to that, could I, could I follow up again, just on the same line of discussion that we've been having with the commissioner's report?
Sure.
And it picks up a little bit on what Sophia was just saying, which actually she was just kind of unknowingly reading my mind, which is really, I think it would be beneficial to the extent that you're able to, Commissioner, to sort of describe who are those people that are making decisions? What's the, what is the relationship from the state reopening task force and individual district decisions? If there's some, if you could speak to sort of an interplay between those things as folks are making decisions about what happens over the summer and fall?
Sure. So on the task force, the reopening committee, the K-12 reopening committee, we have Commissioner of Early Childhood, Beth By. We have Jan Hockadel from AFT, Don Williams from CEA, Rich Branson from the independent schools in Connecticut. We also have Fran Rabbinowitz, who represents CAPS and superintendent's groups. We have Glenn Longreeny, who represents school-based leadership, but also sports, which we know is an important topic as well in discussing reopening. And we have Bob Raider, who represents the Boards of Education. That makes up a small group of the reopening advisory team. Ultimately, it's the governor that makes the decision. So we're an advisory team. And as an executive member of the governor's team, I would be the one to sign off on whatever recommendations are made. We receive information from those six regional teams, and we have a certain structure of how that information is going to be communicated to the Board of Education with input from, I believe it's between thirty to forty members that meet weekly, including parents, teachers, superintendents from urban districts, from rural districts, because there are different needs in different areas. So that flow of information is constant, weekly, and then we process it at the reopening team. And ultimately, the reopening team with recommendations on policy still have to have that work approved by Guidelines Subcommittee. The Guidelines Subcommittee are made up of folks from our Department of Public Health, epidemiologists, and folks that understand the transmission of disease so that the decisions that are being made are not done so in a way that is unsafe. So ultimately, they have to look at it, and our legal teams have to look at it also to make sure that the decisions that are going to be made follow law. So that's kind of the flow of information. We also receive information from different groups. As I mentioned earlier, members of our team have spent countless hours, quality hours, listening, listening to, I participated in a phone call with SEEK recently, an advocacy group that supports students. an advocacy group that supports students with special needs. So we're taking input from those different groups. I met with a group of students not too long ago to hear their perspective on what challenges they're having as well. So those are pieces of information that, that come in to, to inform the decisions. I hope that answers your question.
Super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So Kathy, did you have?
Commissioner, I have a question for the Commissioner.
Okay.
Commissioner, would it be possible for the board to form a student committee to advise this reopening Connecticut committee to, to be a more formal voice? I mean, I certainly know the staff and the agency has done a great deal. But we don't have students that work at the agency. So I don't know about the process of how this could happen, but if it could, I would really like to see it. And I think another population is, you mentioned the special ed population, but also our special needs children. You know, we have children out there that are doing more than they've ever done, believe it or not, and are engaged because of this type of distance learning. And I think we have to look at that as well. You know, we return and say, okay, that's over for you. Now you go back to what you didn't do good at. So I think we, there is just so much we have to look at and I think we need to hear that directly from students. And I think, you know, we have on play, in place on our board, as well as many districts have, you know, students on their boards, that I think we can get that in some formalized way. So I was wondering if that's possible.
Thank you. Yes. So as you said, you know, the, the voice of students and they bring up things that, that you don't even think about or from their perspective, you know, what they're really thinking about. So I had the privilege of, of listening in on a group, but that's organized by, by a different agency. I would welcome the, the directive of the board to engage in that process in a more structured way. And I agree with you, Erin. I think it would give us tremendous insight in, in the decisions that we're making. At the end of the day, we need to have the students at the center, continue to have the students at the center. So I would welcome that. I don't know if that goes here or in items later on, maybe items for discussion or, I'm not sure where, where on the agenda it would fall, but we would welcome that opportunity to more, more, in a more structured way, engage students. Thank you.
I think also with the students, if you want to engage students for next year's reopening, it would definitely be good to look at the Student State Advisory Board, who I think is coming to present in June, and also groups that are like juniors, obviously, because I think they're getting the most impacted and obviously they're rising up to be seniors. So looking at their perspective, it's going to be definitely beneficial for seeing how to reopen in the fall.
And I'd recommend a similar group for caregivers who are trying to figure out how to, how to support students and balance distance learning and the need to work, return to work outside of the home. Maybe they've already been working outside of the home. So if we could have some similar process, I think that would really inform our planning.
Alan, I guess it goes to you. Where, where do we, on the agenda, where do we bring up these proposals to have these two committees formed? I brought it up because the commissioner was speaking of, you know, the questions were raised about, raised about voice. And so it went along with that from the NASB perspective, but maybe we can get some guidance of where it can be put up.
Yeah, let me introduce the following. You have made a very good recommendation. And I think the student advisory board could be a sounding board, could be help because there's not too much time now to sort of create a committee, you know, the students are all over. So maybe that group could be charged to help provide some perspective in terms of, you know, what you're seeking. I also think that we should not establish a committee for every group, that the districts probably have such groups already. So the issue would be how to, how are we informed of, by the districts of what is going on and how, what they're being advised? So I think it's an issue of not creating necessarily, because this is a difficult time to create, you know, different groups for everything, but to receive information and communication. So my suggestion is, is there a way of charging the advisory group with bringing, at least for now, you know, for the June meeting, like what was suggested, recommendations from the students regarding what is working, what isn't working, and so on and so forth.
Yeah, my suggestion would very be at the district level that, that this board is, is asking districts to ensure that student voice and caregiver voice is informing their, their reopening plans.
I, I think that's right. I also think that we can create our own advisory committees. I don't think we need to do that by formal resolution or the meeting. I think we can just do it if we agree upon it. There are not going to be committees that are empowered. You know, we're not delegating authority to them. So I think we can certainly ask people to help us in any way that seems best. And we can continue that discussion after this meeting. But I, I confess that, that my mind is boggled. And I've not been able to get it around this problem at all because it's growing. Aw, Welda?
Yes, no, the, the other thing is, as, as a district level, I'm sure that there are different gray levels because the other challenges that, that the students are facing are the ones that are getting ready for college. We can't also ignore that segment of seniors that, you know, because now they're encountering a lot of, you know, you know, this thing with the SATs and preparation for the, for the workforce, but most importantly for higher education. So I'm hoping that these, these districts from the, from the different levels, that they do have different grades representing the student body. Very important.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Something that, oh, someone, is someone else calling? Someone, something that Millen and I were talking about the other day was, was something along the lines of engaging students through like the main CSD body. So we were thinking about what could be done in terms of communication. How can the CSD engage with students online? Since everything is online and distance learning anyways, we were thinking if it might be beneficial to release some polls for students and try to see where students' heads are at. And it doesn't have to be something so, so formal as in it's a voice conference or a video conference or something. It can be something as simple as opening up a Google form and taking a survey. And this way, students are engaged with how everything is being done. And you get to see what more students are thinking about. And it would be a larger sample size than all the districts sending their average survey results in.
Go ahead.
From the CSCU system, we do have a very active student advisory committee. And that committee has made really very, very important recommendations with respect to remote learning, online learning. They are very critical voices. In fact, it's their education that's at risk and, and all, and meets all of our missions to serve. So I definitely support having some type of, if not a formal committee, where one structures it outside of the charter, that kind of thing. But certainly giving these students a voice, somewhat of a formal voice, to speak to what those concerns are. And they are definitely more tech savvy than many of us. So they come up with innovative ways for us to do and to think about different ways of how we move forward in providing a quality learning experience for them. Thanks.
Jane, is, is that committee you spoke of something that we could all have public access to, to see? I think that would be very interesting.
Yes, unfortunate, and they meet monthly. Unfortunately, the May meeting has been canceled because of final exams online. But the June meeting will take place and I'll be very happy to get that date. And they will be online. I will get that to you.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Millen?
I just have to build off what Sophia said. I think with like the CSD as a body, like communicating with students with like polls or something like that, it just really helps, I think, to get a broader perspective because we have committees with small groups of students telling us like their perspective and really like knowledgeable students giving us their idea of what distance learning is. But I think getting a broader view of all the different parts of Connecticut because sometimes with districts, you don't get the full engagement of students because they don't want to talk to their district or districts aren't reaching out or something like that. I think as a state body, we could be doing more to get that larger sample size. And on top of that, I think connecting CSD with actual people's faces, I, it really like speaks volumes to what students are actually receiving with the decisions that are happening. And I know like a lot of my friends, they've been like finally knowing who Commissioner Cardona is. And I'm like, yeah, I know him. And they're like, oh, that's awesome. And it's good because they finally know the face to who's making the decision. So I think if we do things like that on social media, it'll definitely help students kind of just be more accepting of the decisions that are happening and understand what's happening more.
Thank you. Sophia?
And to just build off of that even more, I, I just pulled up my Southland River High School Student Distance Learning Survey. And it's all multiple choice questions and answers. So even if we did have anything more to comment on, we couldn't just because it's just, all the questions are, how many hours per day do you spend on distance learning? Think about the majority of work you're assigned. Is it too easy about right or too hard? How many times per week do you engage in Google meets with teachers? Is there anything you're having difficulty with? So those are all the questions that were being asked, but I feel like, I know the CSD does not have an Instagram account, which is really too bad. I think it would be a good idea to have that sort of main social media platform because we do have the Twitter and we do have Facebook. But the main way to engage with the students and so many of them would be through Instagram. And you can see that there's so many pockets of school districts with so many students on that platform. And it could be as simple as the school's main account releasing a poll or a survey from the State Department of Education saying, hey, we'd really like to hear about what you're going through and please just write as much as you want and give us any tips or pointers or anything. You're having trouble with any feedback. And you could filter through that as you wish. There are softwares to filter through it so you don't have to read through every single one if you don't want to or if it's too much. But I feel like having that, a main body like the CSD to have students not report to, but to write to, it would be easier than sending something to a teacher. Because if a student is having trouble with how their school is handling distance learning or they're having trouble with how their teachers are handling distance learning, it would be hard for a student to go to teacher and say that or to their principal and say that because they're right there. But if it's a bigger body, it might make students more comfortable.
Clearly, this conversation speaks for itself. The fact that our students have voice and we're giving them an opportunity, they're sharing. I love it. I love it. We, you know, as someone mentioned earlier, I believe it might have been Erin, you know, we're learning unintended positive outcomes as a result of a crisis. And one of them is the ability for students to, to share their voice and what they're interested in in ways that maybe are different. And Sophia, you'll be proud to know that we did discuss at one of our leadership meetings, not only Instagram, but TikTok. And I don't know that we can handle all that or we're hip enough. We might need you and Millen to run it for us. But we have had those discussions about how to connect with students. What I'm hearing from this conversation, I'm going to take with it, from it, is a more structured way of connecting with students from the agency on topics that could help guide our work moving forward, which it might include, you know, surveys that are wide, with a wide net, but also small group conversations with students. So thank you for that information. And Sophia and Millen, thank you. You know, I think you've set the bar for conscientious thinkers that can help improve our work, not only as a board, but as an agency. And I appreciate that. Thank you for the recommendation, Erin.
I, I second what the commissioner said. And I've also learned, I thought I was pretty tech competent, but I've never worked at Instagram. So obviously I'm years behind.
The goal will be to have you put together a nice TikTok video, Mr. Taylor, on the progress we're making.
Commissioner, I wasn't able to put together anything remotely artistic when I was in elementary school or anytime since. So I won't try that one. Anything else? General conversation. Erin, we'll go straight back to Kathy, who apparently had things to say. Kathy? Don? Kathy?
Good morning, board members. How is everybody? I just wanted to give a very brief update on the CARES Act funding. So Connecticut applied for and was eligible to receive $111 million in CARES Act funding through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. Our application was accepted by the USED last week and the funds are now making their way to the department. Two things, we will reserve 10% of those funds or just about $11 million for state level activities. Those activities will align with the priorities that Commissioner Cardona mentioned to you earlier, access to technology, access to quality curriculum, closing the gaps in reopening and social emotional learning. We are in the midst of calculating and disseminating the entitlement grants that the districts will get, which is from the balance of the money. So about $99 million will be going out to the districts. I realize that sounds like a lot of money, but depending upon the community, you know, the grants that they'll receive will range from a little over $2,000 to $10 million. So we will still have many communities that, you know, may not have sufficient resources to address the, some of the needs that they'll have. Mr. Trefi, the technical high schools will be getting $2.7 million in the CARES Act funding. There is a provision under it also for equitable services. So you may well be asked, because I know we are continually asked, private schools are eligible for a portion of the funding. It is provided to them through the district that they reside in. We are still working on the calculation of that and have sought some additional guidance from USED. In regards to state grant funds, we continue to make all state grant payments. You know, we have not reduced any payments in light of the fact that school was three quarters of a year versus a whole quarter, obviously because the expenses while not taking place in the building are occurring through the distance learning. And that was it. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Charter schools, Kathy?
So charter schools eligibility for the CARES Act funding is based upon whether or not you are eligible to receive Title I. So charter schools that, which is all of them that receive Title I funding this year are going to be receiving CARES Act funding.
Thank you. Kathy, what formula are we following in the distribution of that funding? Or is it one in the statute itself, the CARES Act?
So the CARES Act provides that states must disperse the funding in proportion to the amount of funding that the district was eligible for Title I A funding for this current fiscal year.
I have a question. And I have a question. Kathy, yes. Kathy, how, how about the, when the distribution of the, of the, after looking at the grants, how are they going to assess the outcomes? Was that, is that also stipulated on this, on this funding?
So there is a significant amount of reporting required on the funding. It's interesting because they've streamlined the application for states and they expect states to streamline the application for LEAs. But what they're requiring is on the backend, a significant amount of reporting. So we actually are devising a collection of software that will enable us to collect things like the outcomes for the students. You know, did it increase connectivity? Did it offer, were you able to offer? Did it offer, were you able to offer um more assistance uh to students who had um differentiated learning needs? So there will be a significant amount of reporting required on the backend.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's very important because it could it could serve as as another pilot program in the future. Based on what the outcomes and and the productivity of the results. Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question? Just on the on the reporting side? Um, it just occurred to me, so what is the timing that they have set on the CARES Act for that reporting back in terms of outcomes? How far out?
So our reporting actually starts pretty quickly. Um, we have a we have quarterly reporting to the feds. And so um districts will be providing us every quarter with metrics around how the funding has been spent. Um, and what outcomes were associated with the funding. So there's not a waiting until the end of the grant cycle like normal.
And when is the end of the grant cycle?
The grant cycle is through September of twenty twenty-one. Although it's my understanding that the um USED is considering allowing an extension through September twenty twenty-two. Depending upon um districts' abilities to actually expand the funds.
Thank you.
That seems like a surprisingly long time. I would assume this is money that people are going to try to get out and make useful very quickly.
You know, I think Chairman Taylor, that it's going to vary by district. Um, for for many of them, the costs that they're going to incur because of COVID are still to come. Um, so districts that were in a better shape with distance learning and, you know, were able to get that up and running. They've already expended those funds. They are reimbursable under the CARES Act. But for all districts, the thing the next piece is the Commissioner talks to us about all the time is. About closing that educational gap and reopening. And that's where I believe some of the most significant costs are going to actually this districts will actually incur is moving into next school year.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Kathy? Yes, that brings us up to the uh financial matters. Uh, which we've just had. I'm sorry to the consent agenda. Anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? They have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Estella.
Is there a second? Well, okay, thank you. All in favor?
No, we have to take roll call.
All right. Al, are you there?
She's on mute.
Al, you're on mute.
All right, thank you. I will now take a roll call on the votes for the consent. Chairman Alan Taylor?
Aye.
Chairperson Estella Lopez?
Aye.
Aaron Vanam?
Aye.
Bonnie Burr?
Aye.
Eric Clement?
Aye.
Karen DeBoz Walton?
Yes.
Elwood Exley?
Aye.
Donald Harris?
Aye.
Martha Prue?
Aye.
Awold Arasco?
Uh, yes.
Malia Seavy?
Yes.
Thank you. The vote is completed and the consent has passed unanimously. Chairman Taylor?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was on mute. Not sure that we have anything separately for discussion. Commissioner, do you want to raise anything more?
I I think we have the committee reports now, Alan, the technical high school and and the other committee.
I hadn't gotten down there. We we.
Yeah, I don't have anything for item for discussion, uh, Chair.
Thank you. Committee reports, academic standards.
Um, I have, we we did not meet, but I I do want to welcome Martha, Wilda, and Malia to the committee. I look so look forward to working with y'all on this committee.
Thank you. Accountability.
We met uh on April twenty-second and we review all the um commissioners network schools that were approved just now. And we're meeting next week. I also welcome the new members assigned to that committee. I hope you can join us uh next week at the meeting, although the um resolution will happen in June for the formal approval. So thank you.
Thank you. Finance has not met. Legislation and policy.
We did not meet this morning, but we do plan to meet um in June prior to our board meeting. Um, perhaps maybe even person. I also welcome all our new members and regardless, as Estella mentioned, because it will be prior to the board. I hope that you'll join us for that June meeting.
See text, Bob.
Uh, yes, I think they were going to try to patch Jeff in. I don't know if he's here or not. If not, I have the I have the notes, so I'll start on that if they can. If Jeff joins us, he can pick up from there. The uh, the system started doing distance learning on March the thirtieth. Uh, and it seems to be going fairly well. They they are in a good position to do it because. All the students have Chromebooks that are supplied by the system. Uh, so they have the technology as long as they have the the connectivity uh to be able to do that. Uh, they have been also using Google Classroom platform in the classes uh already. So that we're just transferring that technology to the online version that kids are doing from home. Um, there's been a the feedback has been pretty positive. Uh, there's been a lot of feedback. They moved the, they usually have a ten day cycle. They've gone to a five day cycle. Uh, and two day cycle for trade and academics uh to adjust to the uh the on to the remote learning. Uh, the the loss of of hands-on component in the trades particularly has been difficult. Uh, they've done a lot of interesting things. I know Jeff shared with us at the board meeting last time that. One of the uh automotive instructors who doesn't even have an email account, he's not kind of into that kind of stuff. But he he was using a GoPro uh and doing his lecture, a GoPro with his camera into a car. And doing an instruction with the kids over that, so. You know, everybody's kind of stepping up and doing what they need to do to accomplish that. Uh, many teachers are using how-to videos. Um, and there are a number of vendors that have been donating online seats to their nationwide curriculum. Including virtual simulations and videos that that students could observe on different aspects of doing work in the shop. Um, and for instance, the auto students that can adjust and dial uh on a meter using a virtual reality uh system. The marking period, the for marking, they've gone to the pass fail, given the uh. The latitude that was provided by the state. Uh, there are some students, the twelfth grade students who want to, they can opt into getting a numeric grade for periods three and four. Especially if they're looking at going to college, they need, they want to make sure they've got a numeric grade to go along with that. Um, they've been provided, the students are being provided with resources beyond academics and trades. Guidance on where to get free lunch and breakfast can be found. And social emotional support for the parents and for the professional uh resources for educators. Uh, they they've donated well over a thousand pounds of food to uh throughout Connecticut. To the Salvation Army in Bridgeport, uh in Connecticut, on Hands and Hartford. Our organizations that they partner with partnered with. Uh, early on, uh, when the need for protective equipment was was uh extremely bad. And now it's not a lot better, but they they uh are using their three D printers to do the face mask. And uh, some of the kids have three D printers at home. They're doing those. And they've been using the ones at the school to uh to do that also. Um, and, you know, through the guidance of the state, uh, you know, goggles, gloves, respirators. Were donated to the first responders early on in the process. I think the whole state did that, if I'm correct, Commissioner, that they said if you if a department has protective equipment. That that needs to go to the first responders and just get replenished later in the schools. But they seem to be responding pretty well to it. And then we haven't really figured out graduation yet, so. Any questions?
Malia?
I see um that Jeff has has joined us. Um, I uh. Uh, the innovation in trying to address the hands-on component is great to hear. Um, but I have to imagine it doesn't completely replace the need for the that sort of hands-on component. And I'm wondering if you can, you or if Jeff could speak to um how to actually address the the real um requirements. That that students likely do have to to meet either graduation or or certification requirements that that they have. Sort of what is the what's the system really looking at in terms of needing to to address those items for for students?
I see the expert is now on, so I'm going to turn it over to Jeff. I had notes on it, but he can do a much better job. Jeff, you want to talk about that?
The the real.
Sure, I'm just looking around here for an expert, but uh. The the more expert than I am. What what we're. What we're uh actually doing, it's just a I'll give you just kind of a brief breakdown. So when our kids are normally in session, they're in a fifty fifty split schedule. Where fifty percent of the time they're in academics and fifty percent of the time they're in career technical education. So if we just take that fifty percent of CTE time and look at that. Fifty percent of that time, which is a total of twenty-five percent, so twenty-five percent is in what's called theory. And twenty-five percent of that time is in what's called uh. Production or uh work-based learning type of situation. So what's happening now is we're over, we're over prescribing our theory time for our kids. So they're getting most of the of the time at this point in that actual theory. And obviously, they're not able to access the tools and equipment in the shop. So that's unfortunate because that's some of the stuff that the kids look forward to the most. And that they also have the most gainful learning as well with the hands-on component. So we're working in in uh district-wide groups where we're going to front-load when we are able to come back. Into a session uh next year, where the beginning of the year will see a larger timestamp of uh of the actual hands-on learning. Uh, and less of the theory at that point. So that's what we're planning on to overcome a little bit of that because we're over prescribing the the theory part. But as the board, our board chair had mentioned, our teachers are doing some pretty ingenious things with GoPro cameras. You know, we had examples where one of our teachers uh filmed uh installing a uh. Uh, a furnace, another one of our chefs showed an example of making a pretty uh sophisticated meal. And and the kids actually have to write uh and respond to that. So certainly there's some challenges, but we're doing the best we can to kind of work through some of those challenges.
Jeff, I have a question. This is a Wilda. Um, the this the opt of pass and fail, because if it's, I, you know, I was a technical high school graduate myself. And um, and the academics, I'm I'm I would be concerned that to assure that if they're they're opting into fail or pass. How are, how is that, how is that defined? Because they're getting fifty percent of academics only. For.
Jeff, I have a question. This is a Wilda.
Okay, so to answer that, what we did was we very closely uh followed the Department of Education's guidelines for grading. So for the third and the fourth marking period, the kids had the opportunity to take a a pass grade or an incomplete grade. And they also have an option to opt into a grade if they choose, because we did know that there were some. Uh, in speaking to our families and our kids, there were a portion of our kids that felt that they worked hard. And they wanted to uh keep working towards that grade. So um, we didn't give out any failure grades for third marking period. It was either a pass or an incomplete, so no student did receive a fail uh for the third marking period. Uh, they did have the opportunity to uh extend. Uh, we we gave them a a timeframe uh where they can continue to work towards third marking period, even inside of the fourth marking period. We took the position of we didn't want to have any failures be attributed to the COVID nineteen crisis. So we were uh flexible with our timeframes uh with the grading.
Thank you.
Jeff, just real quick, if you could mute the YouTube. I I don't know if you're on YouTube and on your your computer, but if you could mute YouTube because there's an echo. Thank you for joining the the call, Jeff, and for that overview of how, you know, especially in our um schools that require hands-on programming. How you're being flexible and putting students at the center, making sure that you're supporting them the best you can. So thank you for that update and thank you, Bob. I think you did a nice job uh inching until he jumped in.
And Commissioner or Bob, I guess, yes, or everybody. My reading of of the newspapers strongly suggests to me that reopening in September is probably not going to be all that likely either. And I'm wondering if you're, hey, what your what your working groups are are saying about that? What you're thinking about how to deal with that, which makes this even more complex, it seems to me.
Sure. Um, the reopen group right now is really focusing this week on trying to provide um some guidance on summer schools, summer camps uh for the governor. Uh, we're going to shift to reopening fall. We have. Numerous resources, plans, considerations, uh medical studies, all that that's being taken into account. The prevailing thought now is that uh remote or distance learning will be a part of whatever transition in. And that depending on how the trends in in um COVID transmission happen over the summer. A gradual reopening can take place in the fall. But you know as well as I do, all of this is dependent on what the projections are for uh COVID. So if we see a a big spike in the summer, that will likely change how we're able to reopen. Um, if we see that the patterns of reduction of hospitalization continues and we're able to maintain a level of um. Transmission rates that promote safe social distancing, uh reopening and and small efforts, that's what we're going to try to do. But it's really important for me to underscore here, safety, health is our number one priority. We're going to make sure that the decisions that we're making. Maintain safety for our students, for our staff, and for the families that our students return home to. I think that's critically important. It's also important to note that while we're making reopening plans, we have to think about re-reclosing plans. Because uh we have to be prepared if the uh if there's a spike, we want to make sure we keep our students safe. I I firmly believe that the decision to close schools when superintendents made those decisions helped protect students. Help protect staff members, help protect families. So we're prepared to 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 do all. Uh, Alan, to answer your question, we're going to plan for the best, hope uh, you know. But be prepared in the event that we have to go backwards. Um, and we're going to have plans for that as well.
Uh, Commissioner, can I ask a follow-on question? Um, I'd like to thank you for your comments today and also yesterday, the roundtable. Um, or Monday rather, um, that you did with the reopen committee about education. That was really great. And in trying to uh communicate all the information you have. Um, and I think that's going to become critical for all the stakeholders, uh, parents, uh. And I think what's going to become critical for all the stakeholders, parents, other citizens, is that as you understand what the new school year will look like, to flow that down as soon as you have it. If it's going to be half-days, it's going to be alternating days or weeks, parents really need to know that because they're working, companies need to, you know, work it out with their employees how to deal with this because that's going to be going on six months of alternate childcare, alternate family situations. What is like, you know, no one's going to go back on September 1st, everything going back to normal. So people need to plan for that as soon as you guys know it as well.
Thank you, Malia.
And that that impact is going to be different on on different communities, right? And it's going to hit under-resourced communities so much harder than others. So we have to be thinking about that as we're trying to develop policy that, you know, one-size-fits-all is not is not going to work. Parents' ability to stay home and do alternate day and that kind of thing is so dependent on the kind of work that they do. And so I I just hope that we'll be very mindful of that moving forward.
Sophia?
I'm just going off of the previous comments and the roundtable that was on Monday. I'm not sure if I missed that part, but were there representatives for higher education for technical schools? Because I don't remember hearing any of their plans for reopening in the fall and how that would work with, as Bob was saying, the the hands-on part of the technical schools.
So what is your question? Were they on the roundtable?
Yeah, and how like, what are their plans?
Right, so the roundtable is made up of there's a higher education portion of it, but I think you're referring to the K-12, so technical high schools.
No, I was referring to the higher education for the technical schools.
I see. Right, so they do have a part of their discussion is having the higher education institutions come up with a reopening plan that's going to get approved. So it would be specific to the different institutions. And much like our K-12 schools, the location matters. If it's a school in Wyndham County or in the London County where there's less prevalence, it might be a different reentry process. If it's in Fairfield County where there's a higher concentration of COVID, it 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 might take a different approach. So what they're doing is giving some parameters through which the reopening plans can be established by those institutions.
And this is Jane Gates here, speaking for CSCU, Power Education. We do have committees also from the ground up, the community colleges, as well as the universities, formalizing our reopening plans. We will begin to offer just very specific type courses this summer, particularly those that require clinical experiences. We are very much aware of the testing, the contact tracing, as well as PPE. So we're starting out very small, a very few programs in the summer. We are still looking at moving forward to the fall, but we're ready to change from whatever traditional learning we have to remote learning on a dime. So all of that is being factored in now, as well as to ensure faculty and student professional development. We have to ensure that we shore up the skill set for our faculty members, who were very wonderful to respond, and our students to ensure that the pedagogy is followed and the type of learning that's needed for the outcomes, for our student learning outcomes. So we're working along with the Commissioner, Marco J. K., and I think they have been the moderator for one of the roundtables. So we are very much in line with the private institutions, the PK through 12, and all of the CSCU institutions, all 17.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that information. Yeah, I was just, my thoughts were around schools like Lincoln Tech, those trade schools. And I think some of my friends were telling me that they need a certain number of like on on hands-on training hours and all that and how that would affect their their job placement and all that if they were to graduate with more of the distance learning instead of the hands-on, so.
In her head too, with the tech, we are considering simulations. There are some wonderful simulation programs out there as well as e-labs. So one doesn't necessarily have to be physically in the chemistry or biological, the biology labs to meet the learning outcomes. And those are under consideration and some have already been purchased by our community colleges.
Do they have those simulations for trades, so like HVAC simulations or any of those? I don't know if Bob might know that or?
I don't know. Bob?
Yeah, I think the at least what they plan is especially for the is to try to do some re as Jeff was describing, some remediation work at the beginning of the school year. So that the things that the kids were not able to do hands-on, they would be able to do early on in their when they come back to school. I would assume that the Lincoln texts and those would be doing the same way. They're they're kind of post post-high school. But, you know, they know in order to get some of these certifications, you have to physically do things. And so they're, you know, I'm sure they're probably going to do the same thing as soon as they can reopen. They'll be making sure those kids are able to get get that experience.
Can I, can I chime in really quickly? I I think, well, as someone who founded an occupational school, I think there is a focus and should be a focus on the training, but even a greater focus on the actual idea of placing folks in jobs whereby there are no jobs right now. I have a culinary school and have folks who are poised to graduate, yet there are no restaurants that are open in and around New Haven. And so I I think our our thinking should be not just be focused on the training, but also connecting the trainees to actual jobs in given the times we're in.
Can I do a follow-up on that? And and so it takes it into a slightly slightly different direction, but still in the same pseudo vein, which is I'm curious if there are any groups that are coming together right now to be a little bit more current to forward-thinking in terms of what does the changing landscape of our industries look like and how we are going to then meet those needs as opposed to what we looked like pre-COVID?
Yeah, so for me, Malia, that's a great question. I I am talking with our colleague on on the call here, Karen DeBois-Wallin, and the mayor of New Haven and and other stakeholders to try and create an ecosystem around housing and 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 jobs and those types of things. So I'm in constant contact weekly with folks who are really thinking about and trying to do something around the issue of 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 jobs and 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 folks who are folding up and maybe leaving New Haven. How do we create or invigorate a a new economy, given what's going on? So it's not just about kind of creating something within the midst of the crisis, but it's also about how are we institutionalizing things after this crisis? So yeah, so I'm meeting all the time and Karen and I are talking all the time about what's possible, given what's going on. And how are we addressing the needs of folks, especially around jobs and the economy?
Just a a comment on, especially from the technical high schools, do we reauthorize each one of the trades every five years? And when we do that, we look at the, you know, the we talk to employers to see what their needs are. Are we meeting their needs? Are there technical things that we're not doing? Which is interesting because half the half of their comments are usually about technical things and half of it's just about work 21st century skills, you know, showing up on time, all those kind of things. The and also look at the labor data and what happens to graduates when they graduate? Are they going into the field or they're going on for higher education? So that if if they're, we we got rid of some trades that there was not really a future in. We also look at wage rates to make sure that they're going to get a living wage when they finish. It's not just, well, I really like to study this, but I'm not going to make it, you know, the if the kid might be really interested in something, but it's not going to help their future. And so they can probably find it somewhere else. We're just not going to spend state money training them for that. So at least in our system, we do, we just did the reauthorization of automotive and and manufact- and automated manufacturing too.
Commissioner, anybody else really? Are the districts able or trying to provide and is there anything we can do to help them? Counseling services online or over the phone? I I would imagine that, and if if this had hit when I was in high school, there would have been an awful lot of us who are just befuddled and scared. And I'm wondering if if we've got any system to reach out that way or if the districts have been developing that.
Yeah, there there are complex examples of students getting counseling with school counselors with regard to job planning, college. But there's also the counseling, social emotional support counseling that's happening. A lot of it either through phone call, where possible, through video conferencing like what we're doing now. You know, and those are some of the examples that Charlene and her team have established as best practices. And the that's some of the webinar work that has been done with input from from our agency folks. You know, there's there's counseling, there's how to address loss in your family, as you as you mentioned, you know, or someone mentioned earlier. Students are dealing with different types of trauma and there's counseling for that and there's counseling for job career thinking or college thinking. Many families are dealing with loss of income. So a four-year college that was on the horizon for a student may no longer be. So these are all things that students are having access to with their school staff remotely.
I'd just like to echo that, like, I think now is like the time, like the biggest time where lots of kids are having the biggest mental health issues. And like, I think the idea of connectivity is really important to make sure that students have access to their school because even before, when we were in school and everything, that's good, kids are still scared to go to their counselors sometimes or they're they just don't want to. And I think being able to reach out and make sure that every district has the resources to make sure that their counselors can reach out to students or the students have some type of online resources during this distance learning environment is really important. So I know my school is actually, we've been doing so much to do that. So our principals sent out countless like mental rep health resources lists and opportunities to talk to counselors, principals, teachers. So as long as we just continue to give districts that support and types of resources to give out to their students, I think that's really important.
And to add on with just the specifics of my school district, something cool that our district is doing is we have some of our favorite substitute teachers. They pick from a list of students. Half of them are those who are struggling academically and the other half are just, you know, students who are doing fine, but they just check in with. So I received an email from one of my substitute teachers just checking in. And she said that as part of her distance learning work for substitute to reach out every week and check in, see how we're doing, if we need help with our academics or planning for the future or just having someone to talk to that is in the school district if you don't feel comfortable with your teachers, which I thought was pretty cool. We also have the emails from our school counseling and all that. And actually, our faculty just put together a video message for the class of 2020. It was 25 minutes long and it had like all the teachers just talking about their memories with our grade, which is really awesome. And it's awesome to see all their faces and their messages for us.
Thank you.
Alan?
Yep, you know, in my other here in my other hat as the president of CAPE, I sit on a board chair meeting once a week every Friday with as many as 60 or 70 board chairs in the state. And we discuss all of these very same issues that you just brought up. And, you know, it it's counseling, school psychologists, counselors are made available. That's what I'm I'm hearing that message all around the state. So in answer to your question, yeah, it's being addressed where needed. And along with all of the other questions that the graduation, reopening schools, virtual summer school that we're getting ready to embark on, all of the questions and concerns, the commissioner is already dealing with as well. So yeah, you know, that group is handling your concerns, so. It's in good hands, I think. People are doing a good job.
Glad glad and not surprised to hear it. Thank you. Aaron, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Milan was saying. I was glad you brought that up because I think, you know, I know many districts looked at Newtown because Newtown had that in place from Sandy Hook and and what they did. And we were able to learn a lot through that and a lot of districts use that. So I'm glad you brought it up for those that perhaps are listening, that that is in place in some. And certainly Newtown is a model to really look at to how counseling is out there for staff and and more importantly, for students.
Thank you.
Alan, just to piggyback on Aaron's remarks, Michelle Koo, who is the board chair in Newtown, she did a workshop with the board chairs two weeks ago on mental health for our students and for our staff. So again, been it's being addressed.
Thank you. The work that everybody in the districts is doing to to deal with what none of us have ever seen in our lifetimes is even those of us with really long lifetimes so far, I think is is just so essential and I hope the whole world, certainly the whole state, fully appreciates it. Commissioner, do you have anything else?
I just want to say, you know, I appreciate all of your comments, your thoughts, and I I sense the passion. You know, much like all the educators, nobody ever thought that you signed up for for this and and you're in a very critical role. I appreciate the perspectives that you bring to the board. You know, this is unprecedented and I'm I'm comforted knowing that there are so many caring people that are joining, virtually joining hands to to work together on behalf of the students in Connecticut. You know, the decisions moving forward are going to be difficult. They're going to have consequences that are difficult. Ultimately, I think it's important that we remember health and safety will be driving the decisions. And that as an education community, that the closer we stay as one, the more likely that our students are going to benefit. We heard loud and clear, social emotional supports are critically important. We heard loud and clear, we're all experiencing trauma, including the adults. And that we have to be prepared to address that and support that. Now, I appreciate your support. I appreciate your your passion and I, you know, I want to close by, you know, telling Sophia and Millen that their contributions have been great, that this is not your last meeting, so don't, you know.
Right.
And their contribution will continue. Both of them have come on with an interest in in something, I think, within the next month. I would like to finalize that homework task that I gave you earlier in the year so we could share publicly, maybe not on Instagram yet or TikTok, but definitely on Twitter, their perspective on social emotional supports, which is what Millen spoke about, and making sure that our curriculum is is shows diversity in a way that promotes tolerance and celebration of differences. So thank you for your contribution and and I want to thank everyone else for for their contribution today. You know that we have a tremendous team at the State Department of Education. I'm proud of everything that they're doing. And they're working behind the scenes every day, seven days a week, to make sure that we're supporting districts to support the students, okay? Thank you, thank you all. I look forward to continued communication with all of you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Jane.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I did not speak to one of your consent agenda items briefly to say on behalf of CSCU institutions, there is a high level of concern about granting approval for a provisional MAT program. I didn't see the I didn't see the data that provided evidence of a gap in the MAT programs that are offered in the public sector, our institutions. And moreover, there is a downward trend in the completer pass rate. It's provisional, and then to grant another provisional status there. From the CSCU institutions, this causes us concern. I would respectfully request that the board ask for additional data to support this MAT recommendation. We have MATs. Where's the gap? And where is the evidence? So I miss that, even though I'm ex officio, but I knew I had to speak to it. But I love everything else we talked about and what we're doing, and we fully support Jane with you to move forward innovation. Thank you.
Thank you. We did approve the consent agenda, I believe, so.
Yes.
That is done. Is there anything else that anybody wants to raise?
Yes, Alan, I, I don't want to end the meeting without discussing the proposal I brought up earlier about forming some kind of student group. Where do we, I don't want to just end the meeting and say that was a good idea and not follow through on that because I think it's needed sooner than later. So what would be the process of trying to maybe form some kind of, you know, just even an advisory group as Milan and Sophia? And of course, it seems like they would be very much interested in helping us with this. But I, I don't want to stop them, you know, close the meeting and then have it not be mentioned again until June.
We can, we can work on that with the commissioner and with Milan and Sophia and get back to the board fairly quickly, I think. Commissioner?
Yes, I plan between now and June to have both qualitative and quantitative reach out to students. I'll need a day or two to see how I utilize staff with the agency to do that. But it's an important part of the reopening, and I think it's something that we would benefit from. So I plan on moving on this the next month.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Estelle, are you?
No, I, I, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Somebody, anybody else have? Bob?
Yeah, I just want, yeah, I think, I think it kind of, it's probably felt by all of us, but we need to really thank Miguel and his staff for all they're doing. This is very difficult. It's got to be extremely stressful. As he was saying earlier, you think you know something today and tomorrow, it's not the same. You know, the, the science, what we know about the science of it keeps changing. And I've just been really impressed with the way the department's been handling all this. And in very, very difficult circumstances. So many thanks to Miguel and the department.
I think.
We're committed. Thank you.
Speak unanimously, or speak for all of us on, on that. And Commissioner, in, in the work that you're doing, are you considering the apparently real possibility that this thing is going to revive again come next fall? And we may be facing the same situation when schools should be starting?
Yeah, we're, we're preparing for that. I'm a father, first and foremost. I have two children that attend public schools. And I want to make sure that the decisions that we're making around safety are consistent, that we're driven by safety, and, and we're prepared for that. You know, I daily, there are daily calls with the governor's unified command since early March. Daily calls with updates, with projections. So, you know, I have had access to real-time information, trends, concerns, and, you know, successes. So all that is being taken into account. And, you know, when we talk about reopening, just, you know, those that are listening, I want reopening. My kids want to go back to school. My, you know, we want it back too. But know that we have to do it in a way that's safe because there's nothing that could hurt schools or keep schools closed longer and businesses longer. There's nothing that can do that worse than a quick reopening where we're now infecting, where people are being infected, and now we're shutting down for much longer. So a carefully thought out reopening plan that takes into account what the epidemiologists are sharing in terms of safety is critically important. And know that the, the decisions that are being made are made very seriously with input from many folks. And ultimately, safety is our number one, but we understand that parents need to get back to work. We understand that kids want to see their friends and engage, and we understand that there's a social emotional toll when that's not possible. Their health and safety and that of our staff and their families are critically important as well. We're on it. We're going to stay on it, and we're committed to supporting our students in Connecticut.
Thank you very much. We know that. Don?
May I just add that I think the commissioner should be commended for being such an excellent spokesman for the department at this time on TV and radio and podcasts. I think he's really articulated very well.
Thank you. I think we all agree, judging from the nodding heads, that I say. Don, did you want to say something?
Okay.
Anybody else?
Miguel, I think now you just have to work on TikTok with Peter, and you'll be all set.
I'll work on it.
You go first.
Okay. I guess we are ready to adjourn. Thank you all. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Or you were waving. Okay. Bye all.